Welcome, everybody, to the Burwick Planning Board. It's a regular meeting for Thursday, March 21st, 2019. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Planning Board members present, we have the alternate member, Noah Cobb. We have regular member, Sean Winston. We have Niles Shore. We have the Vice Chair, Paul Bovere. We have regular member, Nicole Fecto. And we have alternate, Mike LaRue. We also have the Town Planner here, and the Code Enforcement Officer, and members of the -- in the audience here. So, before we do Public Comment Session, this is something that we actually should have done back in January. We need to elect our officers again, once again, here on the board. So, we'll start off with the Secretary. And the Secretary currently is Nicole Fecto, who is supposed to be taking notes every meeting.
I nominate Sean Winston.
We have a nomination for Sean Winston. Do we have a second?
Please second.
I'll second that also.
Second your motion.
I'm just kidding.
You can't second your own motion.
Paul? Paul?
Paul.
Paul.
Your mic.
Paul, your microphone.
Your mic.
Where's your microphone?
Where is it?
It's on the floor.
We have a motion to make Sean Winston the Secretary. Do we have a second?
Really? Nobody's going to second this.
If they know what's good for them.
Okay, we need to come up with the Secretary here. So, if we don't have a motion -- oh, we have a motion, we don't have a second.
But I'll make a motion that we have Nicole Fecto to repeat as Secretary.
Okay.
You guys are the worst.
We have a motion for Nicole Fecto as Secretary. Do we have a second?
Come on, you guys.
I'll second. We have a second. All right, so we have a motion and a second for Nicole Fecto for the next year to be the Secretary for the Planning Board. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hands. No?
What?
Anybody no?
Oh, I was just going abstain since it's myself.
You can vote for yourself.
I don't want to vote for myself. I wanted to have some further discussion.
That's four, nothing, and with one abstaining. Next is for the Vice Chair of the Burwick Planning Board, which is currently Paul Bovere.
I'm going to nominate Niles Shore for Vice Chair.
We have a motion for Niles Shore for Vice Chair of the Burwick Planning Board. Do we have a second?
I will second that one.
Seconded. Further discussion?
I think Niles would be a great Vice Chair. He's a hell of a guy, and he could run a good meeting.
He has experience.
He has experience, yep.
Any further discussion? Okay, so, we have a motion and a second for Niles Shore. Further discussion, all in favor, signify by raising your hands. Okay, that's four, zero. And he knows, and he abstains. And he's abstaining. Okay, next, we have a -- for the Chairman for the Burwick Planning Board, which is currently me.
You're not looking at me, Paul.
Because I've got to look at somebody and not be uncomfortable.
You'd need a mirror.
I nominate Dave Andreessen to continue his tenure.
And being the second, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
You're a great Chairman.
Thank you very much. I would appreciate being on it for another year or so.
Good.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And I'm going to vote for myself.
Wow, what a guy.
This is America, so. It's zero. All right, now that we got that out of the way.
Yeah.
Now that we got that out of the way.
All right.
Public comment session is open to any resident or property owner here in the Town of Burwick to come forward and speak about anything that relates to the Planning Board. Public comment session is open. Feel free to come forward. We also have a public hearing this evening, so if you want to just save your comments for the public hearing, that will be coming up in a couple. Anybody for Public Comment Session? Feel free to come forward. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, we will close the public comment session, moving on to the approval of minutes for the March 7th, 2019 meeting. Any changes or amendments?
I only found one typo.
What was that?
Old Business, number two, on, looks like, the second page. The sentence that starts, "Lee J., explain the first floor," I think that should be "will," not "with."
Wow, Sean. Putting Niles out of business with that one.
Or Paul, I mean.
I was waiting to see if Paul picked up on it.
I would have found something, but I was not here to.
He's been going easy on James lately, so. All right, so we have one change there. Anything else?
On the last page, I believe, the library bookshelf goes until the 27th.
Okay.
I don't know where you guys are.
Any other changes? So, the motion will be for the approval of the minutes as amended?
I will move that we approve the minutes from Thursday, March 7th, as amended.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Oh, abstaining.
Abstaining?
Abstaining.
And one. Okay, so that is three, with one abstaining. All right. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for the Medical Marijuana Storefront, 513 Portland Street. Zone RCI, Trican Alternatives, is the applicant. So, feel free to come forward. This is a public hearing only for this application. We are going to be discussing this in Old Business, so if the applicant wants to come forward and talk now, you're more than welcome to, or anybody else in the public is more than welcome to come forward, but we will be moving on to this next. Public hearings open. Okay, seeing nobody come forward for the public hearing. Next on is Old Business, Medical Marijuana Storefront, 513 Portland Street, RCI Zone. Applicant is Trican Alternatives. And I will turn it over to the Town Planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, I did not prepare a report on this, but you do have a draft set of findings, I noticed the typo read off, that I'm sure Niles will pick up. But, in the findings, I need to date them tonight, March 21st, 2019. The applicant, Trican, submitted an application to the town for an amended amendment to the previous approval in order to have a storefront dedicated to the sale of medical marijuana products dated March of 2019. The initial meeting of the amendment occurred on March 7th, 2019. The applicant indicated the amendment would also include extended hours to be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., rather than 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Planning Board held a public hearing on March 21st, today, and I was, you know, looking in my crystal ball, and I said, and this is where the typo is, it will say, "No one spoke regarding the application." So.
We don't have the findings of fact. Do any of you guys have it?
No.
James did not give you the --
I don't think so.
James, I know you're listening.
James. Really?
So, I'm reading the findings of fact. You'll get them, of course, they do have to be changed anyway, amended. So, to go along with the findings of fact as part of your Planning Board report, I will keep them fairly short, but conformant with the comprehensive plan. The applicant conforms to the comprehensive plan because it is permitting an appropriate commercial use within the RCI zoning district. Preserve and enhance the landscape. This is -- this standard is being met insofar as it can. The site has been utilized as a multi-use office building in the past. The applicant is simply renting space within the building for its operation. Relationship of the proposed building to the existing environment, the current structure is not being altered and already exists. Vehicular access, the applicant does not plan to modify the existing access to the site. Parking and circulation, the applicant indicated he plans no modification to the outside of the site. Surface water drainage, not applicable. Existing utilities, there will be no impacts to the existing utilities. The applicant has indicated that the water usage is normal amounts of any type of office operation. Advertising features, no signage has been proposed with this application. Any proposed signage will meet the sign ordinance standards found in Section 7.12 of the zoning ordinance. Special features of the development, not applicable. Exterior lighting, no additional lighting is proposed. Emergency vehicle access, the current building and site is not being changed to serve this use. The current layout of the site has adequate access for emergency vehicles, and I'm going to lose my voice and cough in a minute, excuse me. Municipal services, no adverse impacts on municipal services has been identified. Will result in water or air pollution, not applicable. Has sufficient water available for the reasonable foreseeable needs of the development. This standard has been met. Will not cause an unreasonable burden on the existing water supply. This standard has -- is not applicable. Will not cause soil or erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water, not applicable. Will provide for adequate sewage water disposal. This standard has been met by the use of an onsite septic disposal system. Will not have adverse effects on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. This standard does not apply since the site is zoned for industrial commercial uses. The developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the above standards. The applicant is currently running a successful operation from the site and will only be expanding the opportunity to sell medical marijuana on a retail basis from the site. Whenever situated in whole or in part within 250 feet of any pond, lake, or river, will not adversely affect the quality of such water body. This standard does not apply because the site is not located near any type of water body. Low-impact design, not applicable. Conditions, per Section 9.8.8.2, conditional use approval for the use stated in this decision shall expire one year, within one year, if the use has not commenced. Condition two, the conditional use shall ensure to the benefit of the applicant and bind its successors and assignees, and shall be deemed to run with the land. I, David Andreessen, certify that I am Chair of the Planning Board, no, I'm the Chair, of the Board Town of Burwick, Maine, a Planning Board established pursuant to the Maine State Statute 30A, subsection 4401, and I further certify that this decision was approved by the Planning Board at its meeting of, and will fill in the date.
Okay. Lee J., could you read again the finding about retail sale of marijuana, medical marijuana? I want to make sure that that's an accurate description of what's going on. It didn't sound like it to me, but it was on the next to last page of it.
The developer had adequate financial and technical capacity.
No, no, no. There was one where you say it's an existing facility, and you just want to add.
Yes, this is the finding that I make. Under, "The developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the above-stated standards." The applicant is currently running a successful operation from the site and will only be expanding the opportunity to sell medical marijuana on a retail basis from the site.
It should state medicinal retail.
Medicinal retail?
And is that how you would describe this? You're expanding the opportunity to sell medicinal retail?
Yes.
But, in simpler English, for those of us who need simpler English.
Why don't you just come to the podium?
Essentially, what you're doing is going from appointment-only to walk-in?
Correct.
And expanding the hours somewhat?
That's right. By the way, I'm Aaron from Trican Alternatives.
And your current hours are?
Current are nine to five.
And you want to make it seven?
And right now, it's by appointment only, and the change will be to allow patients to not have to make an appointment and can walk in without making an appointment.
And to go to 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
That's right, out of convenience for the patients, really.
Is that seven days a week, six days a week?
Seven.
Seven.
Not that we're only open six, but.
But, you're asking for the opportunity?
We're asking.
Thank you.
For potential, yeah.
I want to just stay there.
Sure.
Anything else, Lee J?
That's it.
All right, I will turn it over to you now. Anything else that you want to add?
So, there is only one other thing that I would like to add in reference to what was just read, which was the signage.
Yes.
The signage part, we've already applied for a sign permit and erected the sign and had the sign inspected by the building inspector.
Yeah, and that's fine. The finding is basically that he has to meet those standards, and he has applied and met those standards. He did not submit a sign design at the time of the application, which is fine.
Because it was already done.
That's correct.
And it's already been approved by the ordinance?
That's right.
Right, we're good, okay?
We are good.
That's really the only additional thing.
Okay, questions from the Board for the applicant?
I just wanted to clarify, because it was stated last time, and I think it's important that it's while you're going to offer, you'd like to offer a walk-in for your patients, it's still a private consultation room that they're walking into. It's not going to be throngs of people walking into a counter.
Correct. So, there is an individual waiting room where people will wait for their turn. It's exactly, that's our business model, and that's what we're sticking to anyways.
So, the process itself with your clients is not changing?
Does not change. Nobody really likes that, you know, intrusion on their time. So, we've made the decision to keep the transactions done in a private setting for the individual. And if anything, we do have, within our space, we do have the ability to add one additional room, meeting room, that is attached to that waiting room. So, we could end up with two individual meeting rooms. And that is only pending on business and the flow. So, if the flow increases, so that way, we don't have a backup in the parking lot, we would open up a second room.
So, you are in, you do possibly anticipate additional patients?
I hope to anticipate, yes.
More patients?
Yeah, that's the idea.
In the write-up, I think I saw that your lab was going to be sublet? Did I read that right?
No.
I probably misread it.
No.
You're still operating the lab?
Our lab and kitchen is, it's already there.
Right.
And we have our state approval from the state of Maine for our kitchen, and we've been inspected.
And you've got to transport in the raw material.
That's right. We will transport in the raw material into this location from our North Burwick location in bulk.
And you're also taking whatever disposal products, trash, or whatever you have, back to North Burwick?
Correct, correct. That's what we're currently doing with all of our kitchen stuff. We load up at the end of the day and take it to North Burwick. We have a five-yard dumpster, whatever, however many yard dumpster we have over there. Big dumpster.
Great.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, so we heard the findings of fact. Did you read the conditions of approval as well?
I did. I did.
And, so we have three votes that we can take tonight. One to approve the findings of fact, the other one to approve the conditions of approval, and then the third one would be for the overall application.
Well, they're all, they're asking for waivers, which is, that was misspelling. It's a request by the applicant for the building layout, parking, traffic, lighting, landscaping, due to the fact that nothing has changed in our previous application.
Sorry, I did not see that.
So, we probably ought to just.
We'd have to go back and.
Maybe, the only one we got to.
Oh, no, I see that on the last thing. A waiver for the building layout.
It's kind of tucked in there.
Yeah.
But I think that's an old brainer.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, and I address that to some extent in my findings by indicating not applicable because nothing is changing.
Right, yeah. We already have all of that, anyway.
So, you don't think that we'd need to make a motion to?
I don't think so.
Carry that waiver forward?
No. I do not think so.
So, I will.
We ought to note that, anyway, that we are carrying the motion that was made prior to this for the waivers.
I will move that we approve the findings of fact for Trican Alternatives.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that's five, zero. All right. Next would be for the.
Conditions.
Conditions of approval.
I'll move that we approve the conditions of approval for Trican Alternatives.
Second.
Seconded by Niles.
He beat you to it.
He beat you to it. Further discussion?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and finally, it would be application.
Application's already approved.
No, we would have.
Oh, the conditional use.
No, we just did that. Approve the overall application.
I move that we approve the overall application for the change to the conditional use permit for Trican Alternatives.
And as part of that motion, I would just, for the record, note, all of the waivers have been included in the findings of fact is not applicable to any changes outside.
So, yes.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Ugh, that was a lot to say. I will amend my motion to include that all of the waivers have been found as not applicable in the findings of fact, because we've already dealt with them.
I'll second. And seconded by Sean. Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, that is, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Five, zero. All right.
Thanks, Aaron.
There we go.
All right, so I will fix these up for the next meeting. You don't have to be here. The approval's basically based on the draft findings of fact.
Oops, sorry. This is the full.
Can pick them up from James.
This is the full scale plan for Springer. There's two of them. We've looked at it, if you want to pass that one, one of them down.
It's no different than the.
It's the one that's in the book, right?
Yeah, but it's just full color and big scale, better for old people.
Legible. What are you trying to say?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, Aaron.
We're almost the majority, I like it, huh?
Easier to read.
Next in Old Business on the agenda is Medical Marijuana Production Facility, 398 School Street, R3 Zone with frontage on Route 9. Applicant is David Springer. I'll turn it over to the Town Planner.
Yes, you will, and I thought I had a revised memo for you. And evidently, I did not, oh, there it is. I do not have the revised memo for you. Darn.
I have the one from the 18th.
Yes, do you have it?
We do have the one from the 18th.
Sorry about that. Trying to print off everything, and I missed that. Thanks, Dan. Okay, the applicant, David Springer, seeking approval to construct a 6,000-square-foot building to house a medical marijuana grow facility. This would be the fifth building on the property for the same purpose as the others. The applicant has provided, excuse me, some basic information that suggests the workers at the facility work from 8:00 to noon, while some, not all, do work on a second shift until 10:00 p.m. The applicant also indicates that each building has its own dumpster, which is emptied twice a month. No dumpster has been shown on these plans to indicate where it will be located. There is, if you look at the plans, there are three dumpsters located at one of the other buildings.
Right.
The plan, plans have been revised to show all of the existing buildings, as well as the proposed Building 5, along with the parking areas and circulation on-site. The plan now shows, plan now also includes all of the leach field locations, as well as the well location, so that the 100-foot separation between each can be confirmed. The plan also has the existing topography of the parcel on the site, as well as, which allows the Board to see the natural flow of the stormwater being generated on the property. Under completeness, as always during the first portion of the project review, the Planning Board needs to find the application complete before scheduling a site walk-in public hearing. Based on my initial review of the application, I would suggest that the following information either needs to be provided, or a waiver requested made, at which time the Planning Board will determine if they are okay with the particular information not being submitted. Following items are not shown on the plan. Under Article 9, Section 9.8, 9.8.1F.1C.14, no erosion control has been provided on the site if any is needed. 9.8.1F.1C.16, no stormwater information has been provided on the plan or calculations provided. And 9.8.1F.1C.17, no statement of financial capacity has been submitted to indicate how the project will be financed. All these items noted above may be waived by the Planning Board if they feel the information is not necessary. I would suggest that the applicant indicate that they are seeking waivers of these items so that the Board may act on each individual item in order to give the applicant direction to proceed. Under next steps, once the items above have been addressed, the Board could find the application complete and set a date for a site walk-in public hearing.
All right, I'll turn it over to the applicant. Come on up to the podium.
Thank you.
Okay, as of the last meeting.
Could you just state your name for our viewers at home?
I'm sorry, I'm Dave Springer. As of the last meeting we were here on, this is the plot plan that you were requesting on, you know, kind of, you know, you didn't have anything on-site or anything of the site planned, as far as where the buildings were, and so on and so forth. So, I mean, what we showed you here is, you know, what's gravel, what's green, you know, the gravel around the back, where the wells are, the dumpsters, you know, and pretty much the flow of, the flow of the water, you know, of erosion, or stormwater, should I say? And I think that's what you were asking for the last time you were here.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
Without having been on-site, you know, I think it's a fairly flat area.
You know, I was, I spoke to James last week, and we did forget to bring some pictures in that he gave us on what was there before I even did anything, it being a junkyard. The road was already there. Building 4, I mean, even Joe Russell walked out there with me on that one. But a lot of the property was already cleared. Obviously, it was a junkyard. There was two, three houses up there with trailers as well, where Building 3 is. So, there wasn't, with the exception of Building 5, that's where we did most of our cutting, you know, from where the building is back. Most of that property was already cleared out, and that's what the pictures probably would be helpful, that James did give me, that I filled it right.
Do we know if there was a lot coverage percentage?
Well, so the lot coverage, but that's for.
Well, there's two numbers there.
Yeah, there's two numbers.
One is for the buildings, the other is for the parking areas and what I would call impervious.
And as usual, we've heard before, we always wonder about whether gravel roads are considered impervious or partially impervious.
I think if you look at the definition of impervious area in your zoning ordinance, it would be considered impervious.
Impervious, okay.
I can certainly read it to you if you would like. I looked at it earlier.
You going to get through this?
I'm going to get through.
But, so with the gravel and the buildings and structures, it is over two acres coverage, which would flag stormwater, which, there isn't a stormwater. I mean, I don't see stormwater flow or anything like that, or retention ponds or anything like that, so.
I was hoping to waive it because it's pretty much the way it was when the junkyard was there. It's done some site work, but it was all open before, except where Building 5 is now. You cut some trees there, it'd just level it off a little bit. There wasn't a lot of excavation work.
So, you're asking for a waiver for stormwater and erosion?
Yes, yeah, because it's pretty much the way it always was, the way the water's running now. The roads were already built.
Well, this isn't anything that we'll have to, this isn't anything that we'll have to vote on tonight for the waivers.
We will though, won't we?
Not tonight.
No.
We're just going application complete.
Well, we'd have to-
And then we're gonna have to go out there and do a sitewalk, so.
Right. It depends on which order you want to go. Usually, you find it complete and then do the sitewalk, but you can certainly choose to do a sitewalk before you make this determination on whether you need stormwater work done or not.
I just think that, I mean, obviously, it may not have been, or it may have been very close to that in the past, but the climate is changing and we're, we're much more educated on stormwater management and water management and, you know, the quality of our water. And you've got wells on-site there, so I would imagine that quality of the water and-
Maybe we just come up to the podium, so Terry, otherwise Terry's gonna come out and yell at you.
Sorry, the other thing is, it's not a proposed building. It's just a change of use, is what he's going for. I know he was reading it was a proposed building, but-
Yeah, the building's already there.
The building's there.
Right.
What would it take to do a stormwater and erosion control?
I haven't got prices yet, but-
I mean, we're not trying to get you to spend more money.
Because I just might just, just slow this thing down a little bit if it's gonna be another, you know, everything seems to be an expense. I keep on going back to when, you know, me and Joey walked those two lots back in October of 17. I think, Nicole, you're the one that said that Joey did know about the change of use on Route 9, where Joey didn't make that aware. He didn't, he didn't say one word to me saying in November they were gonna change the zoning, you know. So I went in there in December to pull a permit for, for these buildings, and I was told I couldn't do it. And that's after we did start clearing the location of Building 5. And I mean, I physically went out there with Joey and showed him where we, what we wanted to do. And all he said was, I was within my lot coverage and all that where I, I was, I was okay to do it. So it ain't something like I didn't ask permission, I just did these. So I'm kinda like, my hands are tied here where, you know, you know, I've had a hard time with Building 4 and 5 when I, when I, when I should have been able to do it, you know, in October of 2017, if I knew to pull the permits.
Well, yeah, if you would have, if you would have pulled the permits, but you didn't. So, and the, and the laws changed and our-
I understand all that.
The town voted on it.
Going, going through the process of planning, well, the code department and stuff, you know, and having them out there and looking at the sites, kind of, you know, I've already started the project where, you know, it's like-
Yeah.
They started me dead right there, you know. It was, it was, you know, and I already had site work done and everything, which I could prove that I did and paid for. So, you know, I, you know, I mean, obviously, I have to do what I have to do, but even Building 4 was a real task when I was told to be processed. And then I was told after building, after the building was built with, you know, special doors for explosion-proof labs, because these labs are, as I wanted to ask him, where, you know, where's your lab? You know what a lab is? It's an, it's an explosion-proof room, because these, these are very flammable materials. So, you know, we've wired a lot of those in our day where, you know, it has to be like a steel vault, you know, you know, for explosion-proof purposes.
Yeah, my guess.
Anything explosion-proof is steel, concrete, so, you know, so anyways, that building 4 was designed for that. And then, then I was told the usage after Joey and the new code depart, was it Mark, the code officer that took his place?
For a minute.
Yeah, he, they said I could do it, and then I was told I couldn't do it, you know. So it's, you know, the, I've been going by the book as far as going through the town process. So, you know, now here I am, trying to finish something. I really started back in October of 17.
This building's standing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You're just changing the use of it.
Yeah, it's, the storage is, is the usage right now. He wants to make it like the other buildings in the facility.
When did you build that Building 5? When, when did you build it?
It's still getting-
Did I hear somebody say that all the roads were already in place, that are currently standing on the property?
Not all of them. He's extended some of them.
Yeah.
But just, without doing a site again, before we've done a site, I'm looking at this, and I see it's 27% covered in an R3 area. And usually, that stretch of Route 9, I consider it to be, you know, fairly flat. And I kinda think that we would want to consider a stormwater drainage, just to figure out where the water is going, because you're not supposed to be letting water off this property onto your rebutting neighbors. And that would show whether you are or not. And that's be my reason for it.
And also, I mean, I understand, I completely understand the frustration, but by not requiring, and this is for the board, by not requiring going through those processes, that, then the guy across the street that's got the self-storage, what if he wanted to change one of the, you know, or build a building as a self-storage building, and then, oh, I'm just changing the use of it? I mean, we're setting a precedent where people can just go build a garage or a storage building and then change the uses of it, which honestly is what it seems like you were doing. I mean, was this building ever really gonna be a storage building?
Well, you know, we were told that it wants to-
Because it's the same kinda shape and size and whatever.
Right, right. And like, you know, what you're asking me now is do a whole stormwater for the whole facility.
Right.
You know, not just that one building.
Right.
Right.
You know. And I mean, we don't have any abutters. There's all woods, all button. Building 5 is the only one that has a abutter that's in back of it. All the other areas just drain right into their, you know, you know, it's almost like a little bit of wetlands in the middle there.
Yeah, it's, it's always, always drained there. Because you go in this property, if you go to the right where the buildings are, it goes uphill, so all the drainage comes to the wetlands that it, I guess it's always done, done that.
Anybody else? Right now?
I know with one of the applications, another applicant, we've had them put drainage tanks in for runoff and stuff, so one question is, is like with pesticides and stuff like that. I don't really see, I just see the leach field, but if you leak into the leach field, you could be doing a lot of bad things, especially with high phosphorus and potassium.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no chemicals being used on the site.
Okay.
Honestly, I mean-
I, I can agree with that, but like-
Anything, then, you can say that with any house drainage system.
Yep, but with a house, it's-
If there are no chemicals, then what's, you said it was highly explosive. What's explosive?
No, 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 that's a processing thing. That's, that's what we were just talking about earlier with that.
But that's on-site?
No, 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 I don't have a processing. That's, that's the issue. We, we had one building going in for processing that I was told I could do, so it was built for processing. And then all of a sudden, you know, it got changed, you know.
So you're not doing that process?
No, 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 it's not there. No, it's all, this is all cultivation.
So they don't cultivate with any chemicals at all? No fertilizers?
Fertilizer?
No.
No?
No, it's all like a, it's, none of them do that. No.
Are those five leach fields all identical, and are they standard HHE 200?
They are all identical.
Leach fields, even though this is kind of a specialized operation compared to household sewage?
Yeah, yeah. So even in the, I don't know if you sent, there's a copy of that where there's nothing that gets drained into the leach fields either from inside, you know. But yeah, it's just, they're all identical leach fields.
Yeah. The reason why I'm asking that is because there's another facility that has been approved, and he put in, I believe, two tanks.
Two tanks that are pumped out, and they're a conservation facility.
Yeah, because he felt it was the safest way. I think an engineering firm working for him, there was information coming out that facilities like this do have very special requirements for their leach beds are. So he was gonna have his pumped out.
Yeah, that's, I've never heard of that yet.
No.
What about ventilation and filtration?
He's got that in here.
Yeah, I've got, I note it in the memo, or at least note it as part of the proposed any conditions, that the applicant comply with filtration and odor control prior to a certificate of occupancy being granted at the site.
This is normally something that, I mean, I don't, I don't have it.
It's in here. It's like the pelletized carbon filters.
Where are you getting this?
By all means.
I'm missing a huge portion of my book.
I didn't put the books together.
Always from the last time, okay. This was, okay, this was from the last time. I understand now, okay.
I think it's the same system that they use to correct their odor issues in the other buildings.
Yeah, which has been working famously from what I understand.
Yeah, it's been working.
Yeah, there it is. Would you be, all right, so let's, actually, before we move on to the, talking about the waivers, the third one here, statement of financial capacity.
Building's already there.
I, yeah, in my draft findings of fact, which are not complete because we're not through the process yet, I had indicated that at the March 7th meeting to discuss the project and potential waivers that the applicant would like to see, at the time the board has shown a willingness to waive the following. Odor control, since the same system will be used in the building as the others on-site, and no odor issues have appeared. Lighting and security have already been addressed in the previous sites, sites on the property. The same system will be used on this building. And financial capacity will also be waived.
So it's actually five waivers, then?
We're waiving odor control?
That's, you showed a willingness, I say here.
Yeah, I think you said if he did what he did on Building 4.
Right.
But I also, but I think I also-
Is that really a waiver or are we simply saying it's in compliance, get quoted there?
Right, yeah. I wouldn't waive it.
I wouldn't call that a waiver.
No, that's not a waiver. That means it's in compliance or NA.
And I put-
Yeah, they're simply saying we found it to be in compliance before, and they're just gonna keep doing it, so we don't need any additional showing of anything.
Okay, I'll take that out of the waivers then. I do put it in as a condition of approval, though the certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until the code enforcement officer has made a determination that all requirements, including the odor control filters, have been installed and the standards have been met according to the plans and conditions above, as approved by the planning board.
Excellent. Yeah, I mean, the, the condition is they will continue to do what they've done before.
That's fine.
And we will have them certify that that's true. If it is, we're good to go.
Okay, so you are asking for a waiver there on financial capacity? Okay, you just have to ask. You have to request it, so. We just can't assume, because it's not here, so. All right. Any other discussion, or any other questions from the board? All right, let's talk about these, if we're gonna find the application complete this evening, we got a couple things we could do. We could vote on the, because as it stands right now, the application is not complete unless these, unless these waivers are approved. We can either hold a sitewalk, not act on this application yet, and then bring it up at the next meeting, if that's what we want to do, or we can act on the waivers now.
But we can find the findings of fact. We have, because we have covered-
We don't even have an application complete yet.
I'm sorry, not the findings of fact, but the application being complete giving us the go-ahead for a hearing, a site visit.
Don't we have the capacity to refer this to an engineer on our list to review this?
Yeah.
I would be much more comfortable-
Me too.
-hearing from an engineer about the stormwater management, you know, and then we'll have a public hearing from-
Under your ordinance, you certainly have the, the right to request that, if you choose to do that.
Under the ordinance, I would like to make that request.
No, we have a consensus on that. So you would reach out to your experts and draft a memo?
Either that, or you said you have a list that you use. I can look down that list and see who's on there and-
Yeah, don't we have a list? We used to have a list.
James has a list.
James has.
Oh, James has.
Well, or use your list. Use your list.
Yeah, I can do that.
Would you be able to do that?
Of course.
Not trying to make you spend more money, but we're just making sure the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
I was just asking, Dustin, if we could find somebody that might be able to look at one area. That might be a question. I, I know Building 4, one, Building 5 would be probably the only one that I would wanna have looked at. The others, I have no question about, no, I have no worries.
Well, it would be for the whole site.
Yeah, I understand, but even if you looked at it, you would look at it and see, you'd see where the water goes. And you, I don't think you'd have a problem, you know.
We're also not engineers or stormwater experts, so, and it's such a contentious thing.
That's why if we brought somebody in, maybe they could, you know.
Well, no, I mean, we could, through Southern Maine, through Southern Maine Planning, they have, he has plenty of contacts. You know, the whole thing is, 10 years from now, you decide that you want to stop doing this, and you come back to the planning board.
No, I wanna do it, I wanna do it right.
Yeah.
According to what you guys need to do, obviously. So, you know, you know, we'll, we'll be looking to do it as well, you know.
You know, the good thing about stormwater plan is when we get, you know, a 50-year storm, or, you know, really a lot of rain.
Yeah.
At least you're gonna know what's gonna happen to your neighbors when that water builds up on that lot.
Right, right.
So-
And your neighbors are gonna know.
And usually, anything of this scale, we've al, we always, as far as I know, get stormwater, some kind of a stormwater plan.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna go that route, and we're not acting on the application tonight. We're not acting on the waivers.
I, I would suggest in, in light of the need for a little bit of expedience, because they has been dealing with this for quite a while.
Sure, yeah.
That you could at least schedule a sitewalk yourself.
Yes.
And at least whether the, the, excuse me, engineer looks at the plans or gets out on the site and does an initial assessment on the stormwater concerns or issues before or after, if you will have seen the site, you will better understand what they're saying by knowing what it looks like visually. So I would suggest to try to keep the process going.
Yep. So we could do, on April 4th, Thursday, April 4th, we can do a sitewalk. That's, that's our next regular meeting, if that works. Does 5, 5:30 work?
Hold please.
5:30.
5:30?
5:30 would work.
5:30.
And I will try to contact an engineering firm, and through James, contact Mr. Springer, and get someone out on-site to take a look.
That work for you?
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. And then we'll put you back on the agenda then for April 4th.
So that was 5:30?
Correct.
5:30? I'm sorry.
5:30, on the 4th.
I need to know that too, so I can get there.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Okay, next on the agenda is Mineral Industries, 6 Industry Drive, map R72, Lot 12-5. It's in the aquifer protection zone. The applicant is northeast ready-mix. And I will turn it over to the town planner once again.
All right, I do have a memo on this one. Phew. Excuse me. So the applicant has made a series of changes to the proposed site plan, some of them more obvious. Some of the more obvious changes include, the entrance to the site has gone from 40 feet to 70 feet at the throat of the entrance. On the north portion of the site, the plan now shows an existing fuel tank and a containment structure, which was located as a proposed structure in the southwest corner of the site. The stormwater pond has been redesigned to a new configuration and moved further to the west of the site. The site design, excuse me, as a whole, has been shifted to the north. A dumpster has been added to the plan and located on the westerly backside portion of the site. Stone has been added to the outfall of the stormwater pipes, emptying on the south side of the site and flowing to the existing pond in South Berwick. All parking on the site has been shifted to the south side of the site, and the stone slash sand amendment has all been placed on the north side of the site. The number of spaces has gone from 15 to 13. The south side of the site has a large snow storage area. The stormwater system has changed. The size and configuration of the buildings have also been changed. I do not believe the overall operation of the site will change based on the redesign. However, the board should be aware, all of the proposed changes since the last review of this was accomplished. Other considerations, the applicant included, includes, the application includes a letter addressing a number of issues previously discussed. I will start with the conditions first and come back to the outstanding issues after. Based on the information submitted from the main DEP, they are comfortable with the applicant only building the cul-de-sac to a bare course of, a base course of pavement. How does the board feel about this? The applicant will pay to have a third-party inspector on-site twice a week during construction. Their staff suggested a full-time inspector be there on behalf of the town. The board will want to discuss this and decide if that works for you. The applicant has made an adjustment to an easement on the site, which was part of the previous subdivision approval. Since this is a change to the subdivision, it too will need to come in for an amendment from the board. And that's because it needs to be, the location needs to be changed and re-recorded, and the registry is part of the subdivision approval that was previously granted. Outstanding issues, staff has suggested that as part of this process, the applicant pay for the legal fees and third-party, third-party review fees for the application due to the issues that have surrounded the application. The applicant is requesting that the fees be paid after the planning board approval on the project and before the operation of the patch, pan, type of pant, plant, not before the issuance of any permits, i.e. building permits, et cetera. Staff feels very uncomfortable with this because, once the approval has been granted and other permits issued, there's no leverage other than court. and other permits issued, there's no leverage other than court, um, to obtain these fees, and I have discussed that with the town's attorney, and he is in complete agreement with me on this. If it's suggested that the fees be paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, which would allow for the startup of the operation. The applicant has proposed an escrow of $7,000 for the town to stabilize the site should they not complete the work. I'm concerned that this is not enough money, since they are not including the cost of stormwater pond construction and associated stormwater pipes, as shown on the plan. I would like to see a breakdown from the engineer on these costs, and include the cost of the pipe and pond construction on the site unless other arrangements are being made with Mick Construction, um, Mick to construct the infrastructure by August 1, 2019. The timing of the placement of the infrastructure is not the issue for me, it is the actual placement of the infrastructure that I'm most concerned about. Recommendation is, upon conferring with the town attorney, I would suggest the following: one, the applicant tie the payment of the outstanding fees to the town being paid prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and two, the applicant provide an updated breakdown of the costs associated with the site work and infrastructure in order to establish the escrow out prior to the commencement of any construction on the site. The agreed escrow must be established at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Lou Chamberlain from Atar Engineering, and I'm representing Northeast Ready Mix tonight, as I have at the past few meetings, discussing this project, and we have submitted a plan that shows the, the as-built conditions of, of the site to date, um, as, as everyone knows, the, the site was, was constructed too early, and we felt that it would be best to present a plan that showed the as-built conditions, um, and it's, it was found that, uh, everything, as Lee Jay said, had moved about 100 feet to the northwest, um, from where we had originally had it on the plan that we originally submitted. It, it really is not a big change as far as the operation of the site and how the drainage works, and just the, how the overall site works, um, it did necessitate some changes, uh, mostly in location of, of drainage pipes, and, as Lee Jay said, the drainage easement to make, um, the site work with the, with the plant where it is. So those changes have all been shown on the plan, and we felt it was important to get the approval from the DEP for the revised plan, and that, that's kind of the, the reason that we've, we've asked, been asked to table the, the project for a couple of meetings, and we appreciate you doing that for us. The DEP has reviewed the plan, and there's a, a letter from them stating that they've reviewed it, and it's no further permitting necessary. And so, we, we've got a plan that we feel works, um, as far as, you know, the items in, in Lee Jay's memo, I think that we're fine with paying the fees prior to a CO, we have no issue with that, we'd agreed to that before. Um, I think on the, the inspections, I think we had used the term bi-weekly, and we intended that to mean once every two weeks, the board can discuss that, I know Lee Jay interpreted it probably rightly to mean twice a week, that's not what we intended, but we can, we can discuss that. Um, and I guess, as far as the bonding, that is an issue for the applicant, um, I think we've, we've offered to put up an escrow of $7,000 to, to, to fund stabilization of the site, if Northeast Ready Mix walks away, that would be enough to bring in loam and seed and to get the site growing, um, outside of areas that aren't already stable. And I think that that's supported by, um, the fact that the DEP has stipulated that all the drainage for most of the Mick subdivision and, as well as lot 5, be constructed by the end of July, uh, of this year, so there, there's a kind of a mechanism in place that would give us some assurance that all the drainage is going to be put in. Um, so, that, that's our position on that, and we'd, we'd welcome any comments, questions.
Okay, questions from the board?
I guess the, my main question is, who's, I mean, this, this site, I really don't have an issue with what you guys are doing, who's taking care of the rest of the site that should have been done previously?
Well, and that's going to be, uh, Bill Toby from Mick Construction, who kind of inherited the, the remainder of the subdivision, the road, things like that, and he is not here tonight, but I did, I did attend the meeting with DEP, and he has agreed to, to, as we stated in the letter, to, to do some of the drainage and, and build the cul-de-sac for DEP by the end of July.
Some, some of the drainage, or?
No, all of it, all of it, yeah, all the ponds.
You just said some.
Well, yes.
They're going to do their portion that needs to be done, or should have been done previously.
That's right, and, and it's a little unfortunate that the original subdivision didn't have a phasing plan that kind of stipulated when certain things would be built with milestones, it just, and, just kind of slipped through the cracks, and not much went on out there, and, so, normally, you'd see a big subdivision like that with a phasing plan and some, some milestones as to when things get built, and, so we're dealing with some of that, as well as what we're doing on lot 5.
Tonight, we're not considering what Sean has mentioned, but I'd like to know, I mean, there was also a, a large retention pond that was included in there, what are the elements that, outside this project, can you tell us briefly what the big items are that will have to be completed on the rest of the site?
I can.
So the subdivision is, uh-
By, by the DEP, of the, of the July date.
By the DEP, yeah, yeah, right.
It stipulated what the inspections are.
So, this is the, basically, the entire subdivision, uh, route 4 is out this way, north is that way, Industry Drive comes in like that, and lot 5 is right here. Um, there's a large pond that kind of handles all of the drainage from the subdivision that is built, and it was built, and the outlets were put in, and it's stabilized, and we walked that with the DEP. Uh, there, there are three other ponds that are kind of between this big pond and route 4 that catch drainage from lots upstream of lot 5, there's one here, there's one here, and there's one here, and part of this one goes on to lot 5, so they, and they're all within drainage easements, one of them we moved, uh, just only on lot 5, and so, those are the three other-
Are, are those all built, or are those-
They are not.
Those are not, okay.
I think one is, Lou.
So the DEP's saying that those have to be built, those, those three ponds have to be built by July?
Yeah, either in the process of being built or built, but for the most part, not. Which one?
This one?
That was, uh, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, so, that one and then this one certainly is not.
When we walked that, remember, we walked back there in that road, the road that leads all the way to the back was supposed to be for, wasn't that supposed to be for fire trucks, or it was supposed to be a certain width and paved or kept clear for fire? Did that come up at all? And I think that was-
The, the, on the subdivision, which is a totally separate issue from this, just for your information, there was a note that said that the, um, roadway needs to be, um, constructed and paved for the fire department's access to the pond, um, and I'm only paraphrasing, it's not an exact quote. Um, the fire chief has provided a letter indicating that what's there is adequate for him.
Okay, good.
The only question I would still have, but it's not relevant to this project, is, does that note need to change because it is not paved?
Mm-hmm.
But that's something for the applicant to work out with DEP, because it is a subdivision.
The, the owner of the whole site, they would have to come back to the planning board for at least a note revision on the original plan.
That's correct. That's correct.
Which, uh, and on, on an area like that, that does, I mean, it's a lot of gravel and stuff, I would think that we try to avoid paving-
Yeah, I agree.
-if we can.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I don't know the history, um, nor is there a lot of documentation, but I don't know what other plans they may have had back on the South Burwick side, um, that would have precipitated the need to build a paved road.
Yeah.
I've only heard through conversation with other folks that, you know, there was a larger development at one time proposed back there, certainly didn't come to fruition, and we certainly don't have plans because it was a South Burwick project, so.
No. No else? Sean?
That, that was really my only, uh, questions, really.
I've been driving on that road, especially this time.
Want to discuss the bond?
So the bond is only if they pick up and move off-
Correct.
-to reseed? It didn't sound like that's what it was actually.
I think it's for, it's to stabilize areas that are not stabilized, at the point that they leave.
Correct.
Right, but it wouldn't, it doesn't, that would only be seeding and whatever, and if they pick up, take off without this, their stormwater part of the process being done, it still wouldn't be done.
But you, you would still have the owner of the subdivision responsible for that, and he's on notice with the DEP that it has to be done regardless of-
Right.
-Northeast Ready Mix, you know, for the, for the upstream stuff, he needs to do that by the end of July. So I guess that's where we're, like, bonding the whole thing, we're just-
So it's, yeah, so it really is just seed and loam?
Is what we're proposing, correct, yes, yeah.
I don't know what the cost of loam and seed is, not my forte, so a breakdown would be good, probably.
Thirty-five hundred dollars an acre is, is, frankly, it's a, a number we've used from the Town of Wells, and they often collect that much for projects that are phased in ways that don't require bonding the whole project.
Does Mick have, uh, do you know if they have estimates on the, um, cost of the pond construction and pipes?
I don't know, they, they may be able to pull one of those together if need be, or I could, if that-
I mean, I think that's something that we're going to want to see, for sure.
Are you, the, the portion of that one pond that's partly on lot 5, is that your responsibility to build that piece of it, or did they have to build the whole thing?
It's, it's, I, I don't know, it's going to be, right now, we've got the owner of the lot, and we've got Bill Toby, and we have the buyers, and how they are going to do that, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But ultimately, I think that pipe that comes down, comes right down here, is, is, you know, the owner of the subdivision's responsibility.
So if they, Lee Jay, so, we're talking about the escrow account, so, let's say that, um, not that, you know, let's just say that things don't happen here-
Yep.
-and, basically, we're looking at stabilizing anything that's been disturbed. How are they responsible for the, the subdivision owner, the, for Mick, to, to, to include extra escrow in there for completion of the ponds?
Excuse me, well, any of the ponds that are off-site are not-
Off lot 5.
On, just that small portion that's on lot 5-
Yeah.
-um, and any of the stormwater that's associated with it, it is kind of a catch-22, but it, it is my, um, feeling that it is part of this plan, and that we, we ought to be able to get that done, one way or another. Um, you know, I would like to, if, if, if you're willing to go with just a loam and seed, um, reclamation bond for the site, um, I would at least, at least like to see a commitment from Mick in writing that they are going to be responsible for putting that in by the end of July, I know they have to per DEP, but there were other things at previous ownership of Mick, but there were things that were supposed to be done back in the 90s per DEP.
And if this isn't done by August 1st, this, this project goes nowhere.
No, they'll already have their, they'll already have their occupancy permit, they'll be, they'll be rolling.
That's right.
It would be under enforcement, there would be enforcement actions from the DEP, most likely.
So what we're looking for is a commitment from the subdivision, not, not lot 5, the subdivision owner, to the Town of Burwick, not the DEP, not to fulfill the DEP-
Right, correct, that this infrastructure on lot 5 will be established.
And what kind of-
Because it is part of this plan, and it is part of what you're approving, you know, regardless of who's going to end up putting it in.
So, so let's say we ask for that, and they give us a letter-
Yep.
What, what kind of, of guarantee will that letter have to the town that it will be completed?
Well, whether it's going back to DEP, or it's going to, um, take legal action against them, we can say they told us that they were going to do it, we would have something in writing.
So we could be even a co, if the DEP does act against them-
Yeah.
-then we could be a co-partner, you know, partner in that.
Ask our, our legal representative, our official legal eagle, does that sound good?
What he said is-
Good.
Well, thank you.
Well, I like that idea.
And how do we go about getting that?
We ask the applicant to get that from Mick for us.
We'll talk to Bill about, yeah, we can do that, we'll talk to, yes.
But one question I have, this is going to be a condition used for that, right? Why can't you put it in as a condition? If you don't do that, your permits are mine, you mean, you pull a permit.
But you would already be operating.
And two-
If you pull the permit, we won't be operating after that, you got to-
I mean, that's a possibility, sure.
We don't want to have you responsible for what someone else is responsible for.
That somebody else is responsible for, right.
Concrete pipe is already there.
But, this, this is, years ago, this was designed, if it was terribly important, why wasn't it ever done? Why did the DEP let this slide by if it, in the last 20 years, if this was real important?
Well, because they didn't know until somebody made a phone call, and they came out there.
They, they come by and inspect once a year, I have a rabbit pit, and they come by and inspect, they know what's going on.
Well, I, I, I know, it should have been caught a long time ago.
Right, but that's not here or there, but-
Right.
We want it right, believe me, we don't want to go through this every 10 minutes, I mean, we want to fix it, get it over with, do it right, and make a nice facility, it's a big investment, I mean, and we ain't going to leave you hanging out on a limb somewhere, I mean, you people have been good, and you guys have been here for years, you do a good job, and, we ain't here to make you guys look bad, believe me, I mean, we just want to work with you.
Yeah, okay.
If we had known about all this, you know, we would have dressed up way back, you know, we did not know.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? All right, how does the board want to move forward right now?
I don't even know where we are in this process.
Well, what are we-
We've got, we've got a commitment from the applicant to get a letter from Mick stating, stating their, uh, willingness-
Yes.
-and financial, uh, capacity to complete the ponds, the stormwa, the, the retention ponds, so we've got that, um, and then we need, also need to discuss whether or not we think that that escrow of $7,000 to the town is, is enough.
I mean, if you're not going to include any of the, um, stormwater infrastructure, $7,000 would probably-
Sounds like that's fine, yeah.
-get it done, so, I mean, if you're, if you're feeling, you know, if we get a letter for, through them, um, from Mick, with the commitment that it will be accomplished as part of their August 1st or July 30th deadline, then, um-
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't think, I mean, I don't know how much it would be, but let's say it's $40,000, I, I don't think that, that they should be put on the hook, put on the hook for that and put that money up in escrow.
Right, so, um, as long as we can get that letter, um, I mean, I guess what you could do, you've held your public hearing, you've done your site walk, you've got a revised plan, if, if you feel comfortable with the $7,000, then, um, I suspect you could approve this with the conditions that they provide the $7,000 escrow bond, um, I think as I wrote it down, prior, prior to the issuance of any permits, um, or the start of construction, although construction's already started.
A little late on that one.
More construction.
No, no, that, that pertains to the legal fees-
That's for the other, the legal fees.
Um, the need for the escrow bond would be like tomorrow-
Yeah.
-so that you could start work out there, and if you walked away from the site for whatever reason, then the city can go in and at least reclaim it for erosion control and other things, so, that would need to be given to either a letter of credit, um, some instrument that would need to be submitted to, um, the city for safekeeping, um, during construction, which would go back to you if the site is completed. for safekeeping during construction, which would go back to you if the site is completed.
And then the other, the third-party attorney fees would be due
Prior to then issuing a certificate of occupancy on the site, which would not allow them to start operation legally
Right.
without the CO.
I don't know if it'll make you feel any better or not, but all that pipe for these drains are resolved there. They don't have to buy it. They have all the equipment to put it in with, and they have the knowledge. It shouldn't be a big problem, you mean. I can't speak for them, but I'll tell you, I know everything's, yeah, because we moved it, and the man holds everything there to make this all go together, you mean.
Perfect.
So I want it together as bad as you do, believe me, probably more than you do. And I'll help them do it, anything we can, you mean. Work together with them. Get this mess cleaned up, you know.
It's like a lot of finish work.
Because you've got a worse mess on the other side to take care of, and you've got no bond over there.
So who does the footwork to get a, a letter from the five lot sub, for the subdivision?
They're going to.
You're gonna do the legwork and talk to MIC Construction then?
Sure will.
And there's still the issue of how you want to deal with a third-party inspector. Or if you even feel you need one out there.
I don't think that twice a week is necessary. I don't think that daily is necessary.
Okay.
I, I, that's my opinion. I think some, you know, weekly or bi-weekly would be sufficient.
I think I wouldn't go less than weekly. I'd do it once a week. I would do it once a week.
Once a week. This, I mean, you chime in on that, Dan? Just early enough.
You're okay with once a week?
We're okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something we can establish.
I was just saying that we also need the criteria for what the inspections are gonna cover. So I, I guess Lee J will fix that for us.
Yeah.
Great.
It's, it's really, you know, requiring documentation of onsite inspections and making sure that the site is being constructed as per the plans. But we'll iron that out with whoever gets retained.
All right, so you will put that in findings of facts and conditions of approval?
Of course.
Okay.
Of course. I've got some draft conditions for you if you wanted to act tonight.
Does two weeks give you enough time to get that letter from MIC?
I guess the timing would be, what is the timing, I guess? I mean, we can
Two weeks.
talk to him quickly. If the, if the letter's a condition, I guess, what would it be tied to, I guess, is my question. I don't know how much time will be.
Yeah, it would be tied to the approval, but it would have to be, I mean, are we gonna vote on this tonight?
If somebody makes, if somebody makes a motion, then we can, then we can discuss it.
I would too.
I, I agree.
So two weeks.
A set date might not work either.
April 4th.
April 4th?
It's the next.
And if you're not, if you're not willing, I know that last time we said that we weren't willing to do, to table it again, but if, if come April 4th, you're not able to, the way that I feel is I, I would be willing to table it again to the next meeting, but because it's such a tricky thing, I, I wouldn't want to vote on something without having the findings of facts and the conditions of approval spelled out in front of us, because too much can get lost in translation.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Yes, and that actually is a help, because the only findings of fact I had at the time were in preparation for denial, so I need to go through and actually construct those findings for you.
And then our public hearing is still open on this, right?
Correct. I believe so. I have to go back and look at the minutes, but I think I left, I think I left the public hearing open.
I don't remember us ever closing that.
So the applicant would like to begin work as soon as possible.
Will is in business right now, unfortunately.
Well, if we, if we get it all together, we'll be back at the next meeting for approval, and you start after that.
Right.
Is that, I mean, we'll, we can get the letter.
I'm supposed to meet with Dan tomorrow. We talked with, I'm not into Dan. Working on there, we won't be producing concrete, but we'll be working on some of this stuff you guys want done. We want to get started on it, because you want it done in such a short period of time, you know what I mean?
Well, I would think the drainage that's part of the subdivision, you could do as part of that approval.
Well, that, that doesn't have to be done till
I know, I know, but we're, we're talking about trying to get stuff ready for the next meeting for the approval, so the board's comfortable with the start.
I mean, some of the things, from my perspective, that you need to work on are getting a letter from MIC, getting a bond ready to go.
Yeah.
Or a letter of credit, whatever it'll be. You know, getting the fees, at least, you know, yes, we'll, we'll be able to pay it, and getting a lot of the administrative stuff in order.
The inspector.
Inspector.
I mean, you can, yeah.
And that's a good idea, too. It's just, as you probably know, this is a busy economy. Hydrants, gas, everything else, you mean. So the sooner you can start on something with a time limit on it, the better off you are, you know what I mean, but that's up to you, you know.
So can we make sure what those, those things are right now?
Do you have, you, you want to?
Well, I think it's, it's the, the letter from MIC, it's having the bond in place, not necessarily in two weeks, but before they start operating.
The bond needs to be in place before construction.
Right.
Yes.
Meaning before they, well, operating on the site, meaning, yes, meaning construction, you're right. And then working out, having a, an onsite person to inspect the work.
Yes.
So it's those three things. And I think, I mean, if there was a way to, I know if you're not comfortable not having the language in front of you for approval, I guess those three things could be conditions of approval. In my head, anyway, that would allow them to get their approval and get working on this stuff, and
I'm not comfortable giving approval tonight.
You know, especially the agreement from
Yeah.
Yeah. And just to see everything in front of us, it's been so long since we've had this in front of us, like, this is resaturating our brains, and then having everything back in front of us, the findings of fact, the conditions, so we can go through it.
Okay.
Because this is, again, it's, it was kind of been a contentious thing, and I would hate to do something wrong. I work for the town.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to get you guys up and running.
We understand that, and we thank you for your patience and working with us. So we'll get the stuff together for the next meeting.
Yeah, that's
Or the letter, we'll get the letter, and then if, we'd be glad to review conditions of approval or whatever. Lee J writes up for you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I need to, excuse me, I need to get the findings in order.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of findings of facts. We have a couple here. Okay, you have, you have, you have an opportunity to talk at the end of the meeting in public comment session. We're not talking about that application right now.
We're talking about ready-mix. We live near the
I understand, we're, we're not, we're not discussing that right now. You can talk about it in public comment session, which is coming up next after these two things on the agenda. Yep, I'll give you an opportunity, no problem. This is the findings of fact for the Diamond Hill Road project, or the lot line change. This, we didn't have the findings of facts in front of us
Correct.
at the time. We found an opportunity to review these. This, this application was voted complete, and it was approved at the March 7th meeting, so this is just the findings of fact.
Yeah, they're fairly lengthy. I'm not gonna try to go through them, if you don't mind. I hope you had a chance to look at them, but most everything in there is not applicable. It was a pretty minor change to the site, and you did approve it by a vote of four to zero at the March 7th meeting, which is the last statement on there. So all you need to do, unless there's typos or anything else, is, is, excuse me, approve the findings.
I move that we approve the findings of fact for the Diamond Hill Road application.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Seconded, discussion. All in favor? That's five, zero.
So you'll just need to sign a copy, Mr. Chairman, and
Sure.
leave it for James.
I will get him a copy, just to get his act together. Next is the findings of fact for West Wellness. This is the application that we approved at the last meeting for 6 Sullivan Street.
Correct. Again, I won't go through them all, but on the last page, the conditions were the two standard conditions per 9.8 H2. Conditional use approval is stated in the decision, shall expire one year. If that use has not commenced, and the conditional use shall ensure the benefit of the applicant and bind its successors and assigns, and shall be deemed to run with the land. Findings of fact, draft was previously approved four-zero, conditions of approval were approved four-zero, and the applicant was approved, application was approved four-zero. So all you need to do is sign these as well.
Can I just chime in on this just for a minute? And I've mentioned this before, but on Backstreet, there are LP tanks, probably on town property. None of that was mentioned in the finding of facts. And I just would like to make sure that that is out in the open. And it's not, not here in the findings of fact, probably under special features, maybe. You know, we have exposed storage areas, exposed machinery, service areas, that typically would be a service area.
Is there a finding where that statement can even be made?
Well, actually, we already proved the findings of fact at the last meeting, so we, we wouldn't be able to go back and amend those.
That's on town property either.
You know, I'm disappointed there's nothing that's mentioned about
I remember you mentioning that, and I think that we did miss that, so we don't have to take a vote on this since we already did. But I know that you always bring that up with the LP tanks there.
It's a, I'd, nowhere else in the town can I, you know, do I think that exists, and it's, it's something I think that should be of concern, and in the end, the address, it could be a year or two down the road, but I want to make sure that the barriers are there, and the town plows don't hit the tanks, and, you know, that kind of stuff. Maybe note it in the minutes that I complained about.
Noted.
Thank you.
All right, so public comment session is open to any resident property owner to come on up and talk about anything that relates to the planning board, so feel free to come forward. Just state your name and your address, please.
Richard Harris, 26 Stone Lane. We live not too far from this ready-mix project that you're talking about. I know when they originally started talking about this, they were talking about a washing station, and I'm concerned whether that will pollute the groundwater, because we have a well that's not too far from their property. It's 440 feet deep, and it's just two years old. And I don't want it polluted. And I also have a small 20-foot dug well that we use for our guard, that I'd rather not be polluted either. That's all, that's the only concern that I have with ready-mix product. I'm not trying to stop them or anything, but I don't want to have to buy another well. Because that would turn out to be very expensive.
I know there's a, there was a detail for that, and I don't think it's, do you have the detail for that, Lou? Yes. And I know it was lined, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So the pit is lined.
Uh huh.
So
And there won't be any splashover or anything like that will get into the ground?
I don't, I can't guarantee, I couldn't guarantee that. I don't think anybody could guarantee that. I don't think you would get the amount of splashover from washing off a truck. I can't say that that would be large enough to contaminate a well that's 400 feet deep.
Well, the 20-foot one is might, because that's a lot, that's a shallow, that's a shallow well.
Yeah.
Is your, is, so there's a well on
How close to the washout?
They have a well right behind this property, too. Their, their existing well is right behind it, which would be closer than your existing well.
Their on, their, their well is close to Stone Lane?
Yeah. It's, I mean, you can come look at this plan if you'd like to. It looks like their well is closer. So that's their well? Their Stone Lane, here's their thing, and I think this is the wash bin? Yeah, so their well is closer.
We're on this side of the road, but that's the only thing that I'm concerned about.
Yeah.
Most of the stormwater is actually gonna be going that way.
When they were talking about it originally, well, there is something that they drive down and through here. I've seen the building, so.
Yeah.
But like I said, I'm just concerned about
Absolutely.
Worry about groundwater pollution.
Yeah, well, then you should make sure that this pond gets completely constructed, because the fact that that one's not done
Right up to there. And then that goes further down, so as long as this is in, you should be all right with drainage.
There is back here.
Right.
Yes, there's
There is a, there is a fire pond.
Yes.
Yes, yes. We've been out there and saw
Same one, isn't it?
Yeah, that's
That's the one that we saw, but so, here's, here's the pond that they need to construct, here's the well for northeast, and his well
You're over here.
We're about, we're about right here, so you can see, you can actually see them from our house.
Yeah, so I would think that somebody mentioned it just a moment ago, we would really try very hard to get this done, and that's gotta be good for your well.
Yeah, because that's gonna divert all the water.
Their washout pits down here.
Which is downstream, actually.
Right, which is downstream, yeah.
This will be good, this is good insurance for you.
And look, because it was a fire, somebody was burning something over there, and there was enough smoke, so we thought one of the houses was on fire, because you could smell it. I don't think it was them, but somebody was burning something down here, and it was black smoke. So that's why I'm concerned with what they're doing out there. I don't know.
Yeah. Hopefully, having an inspector on site once a week will be good.
That's all I'm worried about. I'm not, I'm not trying to stop them.
Well, we need to make sure that the applicant, that can hear you, too, so we don't want to be having any secret meetings over here on the side talking about the applicant, so.
I'm not, I'm, like I said, I'm not concerned with their, their business, I'm just concerned with the, my well being polluted, and that's about it.
Absolutely. Well, that's why the DEP's involved as well, and that's why these, these stormwater retention ponds have to be built.
And I know that one of my neighbors, which is one of the MIC family, part of the Toby family, his well is a lot shallower than mine. His is about 240 feet, and his brother, who lives right next door to him, is about 250 feet, and ours is 440 feet.
Right.
So why we went down that deep, I have no idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I've talked with Clearwater, well, they're just, they've done a lot of wells in that area. The bedrock's not down that far. Anything below the bedrock, we're not gonna be polluting, and, and one, you know, anyway.
We also have a shallow one.
Right, but we're washing out down the other side of the lot, which pitches down towards that pond. It's not gonna pitch towards your property at all. And if it does, we'll, we'll change it, you know, we'll work with you.
Okay, that's all I'm out.
We ain't out to, we're burying nobody.
Anybody else for public comment session? Okay, any informational items? The board?
At 9:53 tonight, there will be a meteorite that will be flying over our heads somewhere. Probably gonna be cloudy.
I was gonna say, you know it's cloudy, Paul.
It was a big, big item for some people.
Anybody else?
Could I be in the basement at 9:53?
Anybody else?
Oh my God, you're precious. Nope.
Well, next on the agenda is the adjournment.
I move we adjourned. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'll second.
Further discussion, all in favor?